That's what I was gonna ask.
Joe's.
All right. All right, as it's 5:30 PM, I'll call the July 18th, 2023 Town of Breckenridge Planning Commission to order. Before we do a roll call, everyone make sure their microphones are on. There should be a little red light.
You have to maybe need to.
Good reminder.
Sure. I want to make sure my attendance counts. I can hear you.
Yeah.
So Chris is doing roll call today?
Yeah.
Tonight?
All right.
Uh, Mr. Gerard.
Here.
Mr. Fractor.
Here.
Mr. Geller.
Here.
Mr. Lee's.
Here.
Ms. Proper.
Here.
Mr. Garrett, is he as virtual?
I'm here.
And Ms. Gort.
Here.
We've got a full house. Are there any changes to planning commissioners? Any changes to the minutes from last meeting? Oh, Ethan, no.
No.
Okay, as there are no changes, uh, the minutes from the June was 23rd meeting? June 20th meeting, Town of Breckenridge Planning Commissioner approved. Uh, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes tonight.
Okay, thank you. Um, as part of a certified local government, we're asked to take public comment on historical preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open the meeting to any public comment. If you're attending the meeting by phone, plus press star nine on your phone, then star six to unmute yourself. No one present has any comments, no one online. Move up, move, then we'll move on to the consent calendar and we have nothing on the consent calendar. So next on the agenda is a preliminary hearing for 114 South Main Street redevelopment. S V C, uh, 114 South Main Street, P L number two zero two three zero zero seven seven. And Sarah, I believe that's you.
Thanks. Maybe I should use that. I just want to be able to mark this up if we have comments. Good evening, everybody. I'm Sarah Crump, Planner Three for the town. Um, tonight, back before you for a second preliminary hearing is the 114 South Main Street redevelopment. Um, this is the current location of R M U um, on Main Street. And you'll recall that this project came for a first preliminary hearing, May sixth. Uh, this is a proposal to construct a 5,640 square foot commercial building with both retail and restaurant space. And um, there are some significant revisions since the last time you saw this project. I want to get to the correct elevations page and then we'll, I'll start by um, going through some consensus items that were agreed upon at the first preliminary hearing and then we'll go through the changes since the um, last meeting and how those are um, compliant with the design standards handbook. Bear with me, there's nowhere to type in the page number on this version of Adobe. All right. So to start with a few consensus items from the May 16th first preliminary hearing. Um, it was decided by a four to three vote that the commission would not waive um, negative points for the height of the front parrot pit that was previously proposed. Um, despite there being some inconsistencies between the development code recommended height of um, 25 feet and the recommended height in the design standards handbook um, under policy, I think it's two twenty two twenty-five. Um, the uh, development code requires negative points for heights above 25 feet and the design standards re- recommend that heights be consistent with the historical roof line heights found um, in the district of the commercial core. So with the proposed previous um, height of I think 28 feet, um, it was decided that they would have to get those uh, negative points under the development code despite meeting the design standard. Um, another consensus item from last meeting was that the pre- previously proposed steel cornice despite um, its modern elements and the steel bracketry, it did meet design guideline um, two twenty-eight design standard rather. But it was recommended by the commission that the applicant take a look at lightening the cornice. And so that was the consensus from the first meeting. And then we also um, discussed the proposed rooftop deck. This will be an exterior food and beverage space on the um, rooftop facing Main Street. Um, it was concluded that um, because of previous precedent, the roof form and the flat roof behind the parapet wall that this um, proposal for a rooftop deck doesn't violate any design standards in the design handbook and it meets um, all absolute policies of the development code. And then finally, there was previously proposed a uh, rear elevator shaft and interior stair tower. And it was concluded that this um, proposal did not meet priority design standards to eleven, two twelve or two nineteen. Um, these uh, are absolute policies from the design standards handbook and um, require co- compliance. So the project previously failed on those points. There have been some significant changes if you can see on especially regarding the cornice since the last hearing. Um, right away, we can notice that the cornice shape in the proposed materials for this um, front facade are completely different than the previous proposal. Uh, the steel front cornice that was overhanging has been replaced with a much more slender profile cornice that's mostly made of wood with some slight steel brackets um, accents and then I think an aluminum wrap on the uh, top of the parapet. Uh, this is um, definitely meets the request from the commission to lighten the heaviness of the previously proposed cornice. And we uh, staff believes that this new cornice does further comply with um, design standard two twenty-five, which requires maintaining the balance of building materials in the commercial core. So their proposal to do a mostly wood cornice at this time meets that design standard. The, another change you can notice on the upper level windows, the um, muttons are reduced uh, under this new revision. So they've I just want to draw. Yeah, there we go. This looks promising. Okay, here we go. Uh, so you can notice in the upper level windows, the muttons that were previously produced in the interior, those have been removed. Um, this window design still complies with design standard two twenty-three. Um, both types of windows, some with muttons and without uh, have uh, have been prevalent in the historic district. Staff believes this design complies and has no issues. And the third change I'll discuss is the building height. Previously, the building was proposed to be um, twenty-eight and nine, twenty-eight feet and nine inches. They've raised the height of the uh, front facade to be thirty feet at the middle of the uh, front corner. This also, they've also raised the parapet walls to the north and the south. This brings the height of the building more in line with the historic roof line of the street. And um, staff believes it uh, presents a be- a better look as far as meeting the historic roof lines and the view of the roof lines from the street at the pedestrian level. They've also raised the rear uh, roof to meet the height of the front cornice. So if you can see from the elevation view, both are at the same elevation front and rear. The rear is technically shorter because of the grade change on the wall. Another major change since the last hearing, um, they've used or eliminated the uh, um, more contrasting color of the front trim. This uh, trim that kind of broke the building down into smaller elements is now proposed to be the same gray tinsmith color and previously it was a white color and that was one of the commissioner comments previously that that um, trim really stood out and had a significant contrast. So they blended the trim in with the main color of the, of the main building. The rear also underwent significant changes. They have eliminated the elevator stair tower that was previously proposed to the north. Um, instead, they've now housed the elevator shaft and um, interior stairs in a center gable. They've relocated the exterior e- egress stairs that were on the south end. Those are now to the north. And um, they've removed the shed roof that was over the patio. Staff has concluded that this design um, very closely uh, or complies with design standard two twelve, which um, just want to make sure I quote this correctly. I've lost my place, but staff believes it does comply with two twelve, which um, re- regards the height in the district and the roof forms, so. Now, um, that we're meeting, design standard two twelve.
Uh, two twelve, it says use simple roof forms similar to those of historic buildings in the area.
Thank you very much. And because of the change of the rear elevator tower elimination, um, of course, there were interior floor plan revisions as well. Um, just to accommodate the new location of stairs. So I want to briefly go through um, a few of the other policies and just um, mention how the new designs comply. So we talked about the reduction of the still steel cornice and now it's um, mo- made primarily of wood. The design standard two twenty-five says maintain the present balance of building materials found in the core area. And so this um, new design of the front facade further complies with that design standard. And um, as well as design standard two twenty-eight, where the reduction of the cornice reduces that heaviness that was noted previously. Um, two twenty-eight talks about the ornamentation and detail that um, would reinforce the established pedestrian character of the area. The previously proposed cornice had very large overhang and would have been quite imposing at the street level and this um, revision does not. And again, we will move on to building height, which did change significantly. Now we'll show page twenty-five. Um, so because the new proposed height is the maximum recommend uh, allowed in the district at thirty feet. This proposal will get the negative five points under the development code. Um, but they are meeting design standards two twelve, two eighteen and two nineteen, which were failed previously. Um, as far as staff is concerned, uh, under this new revised proposal. Another change in the point analysis that I did want to cover is um, regarding parking. There is a section five of policy eighteen R. Um, it's very specific to the commercial core area and it allows for the allocation of positive points for a strictly commercial building square feet that's also within the parking service area, which provides two off-street spaces. They are proposing eight spaces off-street at this um, time. So we allocated two positive points under the code, which we were not doing previously. Um, so I'll just mention that site suitability, seven R, site design, eight R, placement of structures, nine A and removable thirteen R, ref- fifteen R, access and circulation sixteen and seventeen policies. None of those items changed from the previous preliminary hearing as well as open space landscaping, proposed and drainage. So I'll wrap up with a new point analysis of summary. Again, they're going to get the negative five points for um, proposed thirty feet of height. Um, this is under the development code. Policy six R and they'll also get negative one points under policy thirty-three R for the three hundred and ten square feet of proposed heated outdoor paving. For positive points, they are um, again getting two positive points under eighteen R for the provided parking spaces. Two positive points for proposed um, energy savings above the I E C C code. Um, between twenty and twenty-nine percent energy savings there. And then positive three points for installing three E V chargers. So um, at this time, staff does recommend and believes that they are now in compliance with priority design standards two eleven, two twelve and two nineteen that were previously failed. And um, their final point analysis is positive one under this um, preliminary point analysis. I do have a few questions for the commission um, listed in the packet. And so I can end here and we can have questions and the applicant, I think, did want us to give a, a brief presentation. And also, I want to make sure um, Suzanne is online, I think. So I want to make her a panelist in case she has additional comments. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you for a good presentation and for um, tying it in with the previous discussions. Uh, I think we will um, start with questions for staff first. Uh, and then we'll allow the applicant to present and then questions. Uh, I think we'll start on the right with Elaine.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions about just the front of it with the windows. They look a lot lower than the buildings next to them on the upper level. Assuming that's because the floor of the rooftop rents that.
Um, so as long as there's separation between this upper and lower floors, there's not a design guideline requirement that would in insist that the windows are at the exact same height as the neighboring buildings. Um, but if that is a recommended change, we could certainly.
If you just go to one of the pictures where it doesn't have the line above it, it looks like a big area right above those two center windows. So I don't know if maybe we can make those windows a little taller. It's just a suggestion.
Wait, which, I guess I'm, I'm not understanding.
These windows.
The center windows above it, there's that big flat area with nothing. In one of the pictures, I feel like it really makes it look really blank there.
I mean, the, the upper level is supposed to have, you know, like on the lower level, you're supposed to have a greater void area and then more solid on the upper level. So I, I think it would actually be consistent with our design standards as it's, as it's shown.
I thought you were indicating that the height needed to be.
Yeah, if you look at the windows and the two buildings next to it upstairs, their windows are way higher than that building, which is equal height. That was just an observation.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe um, I'm not sure if you can pull up the from a revised handbook of design standards, but we have a kind of a design diagram of the recommended design for new construction of commercial buildings. And really looking at the proposal to what that, what the template is, the, the current design really matches up quite well with that. And that's really the standard.
Four thirteen or four point three from the, yeah, that right there. Yeah, you can see there the windows are much higher in proportion to the roof line. So anyway, I had a comment on that. And then I also feel like the steel kick plates under the windows don't really mirror what's in the historic area with the, we typically have that um, detail on the kick plate. And they're mostly wood, not steel. And I guess um, two twenty-five talks about it should be natural products or something like that.
The kick plate stone, is it, is it not?
I think so.
Which, which would be.
I thought it was steel kick plate underneath the windows on the first level.
Yeah, I, I think it's a, a stone, which has been consistent with what we've, you know, typically seen in, in new um, commercial, you know, storefront design.
Oh, maybe you can find where it says that, because I feel like I thought differently.
Actually, I do think uh, if the applicant wants to clarify, but I think they are steel.
Oh, are they? I guess I was picking up from the rendering. I apologize.
Yeah, right now we're showing a.
That's all I have.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, Ethan, would you like to go?
Hi, yes, I guess uh, at first I have to disclose that the uh, applicant architect is uh, my ex-wife and ex-business partner. Uh, however, I have no uh, connection to this. Other than that, uh, no financial interests and um, needed to disclose that if anybody has any objections.
Any objections?
Speak freely.
Okay, we have no objections. You can uh, proceed.
And I have no comments.
Okay, thank you, Ethan. Stephen.
I think my comments are, are probably all better addressed by the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Mark? No questions of the staff.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Sarah is always a nice report. I recall on the um, May sixteenth meeting that there was a substantial discussion about the size of the windows in the ground floor. And uh, some of the commissioners were concerned that those windows were not compatible with the design standards in the surrounding historic buildings. But um, this report doesn't really speak to that. Is, is there a reason?
So I, I did mention on page, uh, it's page four of the report, but I'm not sure what page it is in the packet. Um, that despite the difference in height between the um, windows of the neighboring buildings and this proposed storefront, um, the design standard two eighteen doesn't require them to be perfectly aligned. Um, it just says that they be, need to like reinforce the pedestrian, um, you know, view shed as you're walking down the street and you can engage with the commercial um, storefront. It doesn't require that they exactly align. I know it was suggested previously that perhaps to raise the window height, you could use like a plinth or um, uh, you know, somehow adjust for the elevation difference between the buildings to the north and south um, to make up the, the window height change. Um, the, th- these revisions don't propose that. Staff believes that it does comply with two eighteen. Um, in that it's not necessarily, necessary that the elements um, exactly align with neighboring buildings given that they exist.
Okay. So did you say that the, the applicant did not adjust the windows?
It's staff's understanding that they did not. If they made any revisions, they were small um, and not discernible, but they, certainly they could speak to that if they ch- changed the window height. I don't believe they did.
Okay, um, understood. May I read a quick paragraph from the minutes of May sixteenth?
Okay.
So um, this was my question to uh, Suzanne. Um, and this is paraphrased as our minutes are. I would like to further discuss the front glazing. Suzanne, you did a great job pointing out what's happening at the street level and that there are no steps. The delta or difference has been taken up with glazing. It appears to be a thin molyne. Is there a way to adjust to conform with the design standards and adjacent historic buildings? Uh, parentheses, Ms. Sabo, yes, I think so. Um, I'm not asking for a step. If a plinth were added and the molyens were a little beefier, these tweaks would collectively improve your design. And I, my recollection was reduce the impact and scale of the glazing. Uh, Ms. Sabo, I agree with you. So um, w- we can ask the applicant, but I'd like to follow up with that.
Yeah, and I, I guess like, you know, when we looked at it internally afterwards, we looked at the, you know, the diagram we showed that shows four point three point one. And actually, I think the proportionality of what they're proposing at the lower level is more in line with what that diagram shows than either the you know, the non-historic building to the north or even the historic building to the south. If you're, if you're looking at how much glazing and, and the overall height of the kick plate. Um, both of those, the two existing buildings have a much deeper kick plate than what is, is depicted in the handbook of design standards. Where the favors uh, you know, more glazing on the bottom.
How tall is that kick plate? Do you guys know? On the proposed?
No, it's about uh, two feet tall.
Because if you, you look at the, the rendering, I mean, this, the, the picture from four point three point one, and then you look at the existing buildings, their kick plates are much taller than what's depicted in that diagram.
So it's a little tricky. There those two renderings aren't the same scale overall. If I use the door as a point of reference, the kick plate in the design guidelines is larger or taller than the kick plate in their applicant's um, preliminary design. If I look at the ground floor glazing in totality, um, scale of the molyens, fact that every window and door has a transom, the fact that the kick plate itself is lower, um, the fact that there's no base or plinth, collectively, it's a lot of glass. Um, I don't know if we, in questioning, we want to further discuss that or we wait to comments. But, but thank you for your input.
You have a, is that?
That's.
Okay, you think. All right. Susan.
Thank you, Sarah.
I have one question about energy conservation. Um, maybe I missed something, but um, I wasn't clear on what the proposal does to show energy savings that exceed the I E C C or S S B C minimum standards under thirty-three R.
So that would be um, they would have to provide at the development um, at, at, either before or after building permit in order to get those points. Um, uh, like a firm, an energy audit firm would have to rate the building based on the proposed materials. And um, so it'd be, you know, an energy savings depending on the type of windows they select and the um, insulation materials or energy systems that are installed and that um, audit is done uh, outside of the uh, this development review or with they, it's separate from their review at planning commission. They just provide the audit from a firm that shows that they will do that rate, meet that efficiency.
I see. So they've, they've provided that information to us and, or to the planning commission staff and
they will.
They will. And um, we will typically require before the development permit approval, like for final hearing, a letter from, you know, an energy consultant like Matt Wright saying that um, you know, it he anticipates that it will achieve this score.
I see.
Yep. So we'd have that for the final hearing.
So at this point, they just tell us that they expect to come within a certain range.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then they have to.
They have to prove that they.
Document that.
And then at the end, before their building C O's, they also have to prove that the materials they've installed will also meet that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have questions for staff, so I think we'll um, turn over to the applicant. Um, turn over to the applicant to present it, uh perhaps have something uh to add to staff's presentation. And to answer any questions that have come up so far. So you you come up, introduce yourself, and will you be presenting or will uh?
Hi, uh, sorry, my name is Eve with Alan Garrett Architecture. And uh just want to say thank you to Sarah. She did a great job of presenting, so I don't have uh. Too much uh to add. Uh, I want also to thanks Chris. We met with Chrissy and Sarah. After the last meeting, and so we had a bit of a review of the last meeting and went over. Uh, different points that were discussed. Uh, the inspiration for the front elevation, I guess you guys can see the sign up there or behind Mr. Fratcher. The down of break a trench sign with the the cornice designed, so. That was kind of the inspiration for that front elevation. Uh, like Sarah said before, on the front elevation, uh we removed. Um, a lot of the trim that we had previously. Like the vertical pieces of wood that somebody commented last time maybe was not part of the historical look. Um, we also um remove much of the steel that was present on that front elevation previously. Um, we just have a little bit left, uh more like steel angles and and. Different angles um at the main floor and at the upper corners. Um. The other bigger changes we did was like Sarah said, to adjust the height at the thirty feet maximum. Um, so that we are not above the absolute building height. Um, I think that was one of the big changes. Another comment that was made the last time was um about the roof uh deck and um. What we have now, if we go down, maybe we can see a three D view if we keep going down, Sarah. Um, if you keep going down. Uh, maybe right there, if you zoom out. Uh, like right there, you can see the the deck. Uh, we have the roof on uh all the sides and we have a forty two inches uh kind of uh parapet around it. To minimize the possibility of somebody uh jumping off or anything like that. Um, so that was that. Um, the same in the rear. Previously, we were over the. Maximum height of thirty two feet uh of thirty feet. Uh, we were at thirty two feet, eighteen she is, and we brought down that uh ridge. At thirty feet to be inside that maximum. Building height. Um, regarding the questions, um. Somebody was commenting about the the windows. It's um, yes, the upper windows are a bit lower. Um, in the elevation, but looking at some other historical buildings. Sometimes the windows were lower because there was a big sign about it. If we look at the brick and ridge design standard for the historic uh. Conservation District on page uh thirty eight, there is a sketch. Sketch number four, and you can see kind of like where they had that sign. Um, above that um. Uh, those windows and usually the without the sign, you had kind of that taller. Uh, front above the window, so. That was about that. Um, regarding the kill plate, kick plate, uh we still have a steel kickplate. Um, we can change that. I don't think it's a problem if we want to have stone or something like that. Um. Uh, regarding the window height at the main floor. Um, I think they are about nine feet six right now, so um. We slightly lowered the main floor a little bit, but uh we tried to still keep the trim. Like uh aligned with elements on each side. Uh, of the adjacent uh buildings on each side. Um, we can still increase the trim on those uh lower level. Windows to make them maybe a bit more similar to what is on the north side there. Um, also, the once we um start designing with the structural, structural engineer. Uh, we may have to do a bit of adjustment depending on what thickness of floor we end up having at the main like. The main and upper floor and at the roof, so there may be a little adjustment to be done there. Um, and then regarding the energy rating, uh like Sarah said, it's correct. We will meet with uh energy companies such as Metrite. And uh we can do like a highly insulated wall or um depending on where we need to go. Uh, our value in the windows can be increased to reach uh the required level. And I think um. Um, that's all I have for now. Um, thank you for all the time that the planning commission has given to this project.
Yeah, and I uh this is Suzanne Allen Sabo. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so Mike, I just wanted to um respond to your questions about the glazing. Um, regarding the transom, uh months ago, we didn't have a transom and then I think Chris or Sarah pointed out to us, hey. You gotta have a transom um in this district, and I think it's uh. We we added that at that point. That was before the last meeting, though. Um. And then because we lowered the height of the windows, we we brought them down. Um. I think that reduced the proportion of the glazing uh on the street. It also uh we looked at raising that kickplate further, but when you start raising that kickplate up. The proportion of that glass becomes less vertical and it just does not look good. Um, so we felt that that the two foot kickplate with that lowered height to nine foot six. Um, made the most sense aesthetically, so.
Just wanted to add, you know, it goes further on that. When you read. Priority Design Standard two twenty, the first bullet says first floor should be predominantly glass. With a smaller percentage of opaque materials. And it says first floor should include the traditional kickplate combs or blasters and sign bands. Then it says upper floor should be the reverse. Opague materials should dominate. Windows should be smaller, more vertically oriented openings. That appear to puncture. The more solid wall plane and we don't really have, to Sarah's earlier point, we don't have anything that says. Has to line up with the the next portion of it, but um. You know, I think from our standpoint, the design that's proposed seems to meet. Both the standards of two twenty as well as what the diagram shows for a traditional storefront within their her handbook.
So two comments there, may I? Yeah, oh, yes, yes. So uh Suzanne, thank you um for your further explanation. Um. It does appear to me that the um height to width ratio of the main glazing unit on the ground floor. Is um every bit as vertical as the height to width ratio of the second floor. And frankly, that's a matter of adjusting your transom or your kickplate height, but um. Speak to Chris, you know, design is uh something in its totality, and sometimes if one takes individual design. Criteria that are context or by themselves. Um, they don't work as well. And what we have here is approximately, what's the minimum, forty feet of curtain wall. Yeah, it's articulated with some transoms. Yes, one bay has some windows in it, but. I believe that's the biggest chunk of glazing on Main Street. And if you look at the design standards on either side, there's about a two foot um solid. Um, whether it's wood or stone on either side. And the plant itself is taller, so collectively, I don't think they're following the design standard because they push. The extent, the length, the height, and the face of the glazing throughout.
I guess I would go back to the actual comments within the design standard. It doesn't. All the other standards that you're mentioning are not listed under Design Standard two twenty. This says that they should be predominantly glass with a smaller percentage of opaque materials. And I think if you look at, you know, around town, on the same page, it shows, you know, design from the gold pan, which also has a very low kickplate that has. You know, a very different style window, and there's there's a variety of storefront windows within. Um, the down the downtown area. So I I think you're you're kind of stretching with what's in the design standards. There's something else that may be. Of solid architectural um form, but I don't think that's what the design standard states. I think you're asking for a higher level than what the design standard um asks for.
And and excuse me, one thing is the entry is recessed four feet. So it's not like a completely continuous on that uh front elevation.
I'd like to comment on the windows too. I commented on on the last meeting we had. Um, I'm I think that, you know, they're pretty huge aluminum clad windows that look like. My office building in Alexandria, Virginia on the first floor, so. I know like it might meet the code as far as like literally, but does it have a look? That it looks historic or match the historic look of the buildings next to it? I don't think it really does, but.
Yeah, I I think that we're trying to pull it into a code-based, yes, similar to the comments I think Steve made about the um. The mullions in the window, you know, our handbook says that there's a variety of window designs that are appropriate, and they show. Some that have none, some are divided, some that are not. Um, you know. There may be a overall preference for certain types of windows or a personal style, but. Just in terms of, you know, the danger of setting precedent and kind of layering on, there's already a lot of standards that. I guess um designers have to meet. I think we really need to be looking at the code versus what. You know, maybe trying to take it a little bit further and having that creep, you know, beyond the code. And that's just one of the things that we. When we went back through and looked at the comments and actually read the handbook of design standards, we noticed from the from the previous meeting.
Hey, uh, you might as well let's if we have questions or other comments that we think the applicant could address. And Elaine, do you want to do any more? We'll go in there.
Um, no, you've already addressed mine. Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
You're still muted, Ethan. Are you just shaking your head?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm here. I I have no questions or comments for the applicant.
Thank you.
Eve, can we talk about the rooftop just for just a minute?
Oh, yes.
See that I understand what it is. I think you just answered one of my questions sort of off the cuff. When you said that the. The um sidewalls were going to be forty two inches.
Uh, correct, yes.
That's from the floor of the roof to the edge of what's now a little bit of a shed roof on the.
Correct, yes.
Um. What do you see about that shed roof? Up against the side of the building to the north. Because it's going to send all its water and snow melt up against the side of that building. Is you have a plan for that? I'm guessing you do.
Uh, right now, most of the roof are sloping um kind of um. Away, we will need like some type of drain at the center of that um. Rooftop. Uh, we have a pretty thick uh floor system. That should allow us to have like a a center drain that maybe he did and uh. That will drain the water um to the side of one of the walls. Um. I think we may have uh some type of floating tile system with a waterproof deck system underneath. Or something like that to and and with a slope to address uh the drainage on that rooftop.
My next question is about how your rooftop matches up with the rooftop to the north. And it looks to me from the drawings that their rooftop and the sidewall is going to be above. Your sidewall. Do you do you have any of those measurements? Do you know?
Uh, I don't have exact measurements. We match the front of the cornice with the building to the north. So you're correct that when we keep going with the slope, uh that the roof is slightly lower. Uh, maybe that's something we can study a little bit. Um, so that it doesn't drain uh next to that building. If those two buildings are touching each other, uh maybe uh we need to have some. Uh, type of uh like a flat roof or something like that on that side.
And I think it was one of the things that I did comment on before is making sure that people are. Dissuaded from going from one roof to another and what the.
Yeah.
The balance on the sidewalls would be. So maybe at at the final hearing, you might look at that, look at the design on the. The proposed rooftop next door and just see how they match up. I'd like to.
Okay.
I find that embedded crushed glass helps, yeah.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Throwing bottles.
Eve.
Um, the front of the building, um, what is that material?
Uh, like the elevation that we're seeing here.
The front elevation. I assume it's a wood frame.
Uh, yeah, it's all uh wo- uh like a wood lap siding right now.
It's proposed as Western red cedar and to be painted with four inch lap siding.
So you're not showing the siding, the horizontal siding on it.
Uh, we are, but it looks like it's not coming on. I don't know if we go up to the another elevation, maybe.
Question was, was it was it stucco or what is it?
Uh, no, yeah, it's like horizontal wood.
Okay.
Lap siding, but yeah, for some reason, uh. You can barely see the the horizontal lines on that there.
So there will be some corner boards and some detail that aren't shown here.
Uh, correct, yes, like. Yeah, like we're showing there are some trim uh like uh at the corners, things like that. Um, that will where in which the horizontal lap siding will die into. At each corner.
Been a number of comments about the space above the second floor windows and what is now the proposed cornice. And is it not true that uh those windows are adjusted so that the head of the window. Is not above the ceiling of the second floor?
Uh, yes, that's correct. Uh.
Couldn't be any higher.
Uh, Sarah, if you go down uh to another section. Next one, right there, so you can see the floor. Uh, so you can see that's where the window are. Uh, currently, we're showing like a twenty inch thick floor. Uh, so like I said, uh, if we meet with the engineer and he told us that we can raise. We don't need uh like that thick of a floor system, then we could uh maybe raise. The window in the front slightly.
And I think the other um. Potentially objectionable thing that people on the panel are looking at. In terms of that space is just due to the fact that this cornice is not nearly as deep as the first proposed cornice. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Right now it is about six inches deep.
When I talk about the depth of the cornice, I'm talking about the height rather than.
The height is, we try to match the height on what's adjacent.
But it's considerably less than what you originally proposed, is it not?
It's slightly different because before we had a larger step in the center. That was making it look really thick and tall. So right now we try to keep a consistent thickness along all the way.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Further questions?
My questions, my questions have been answered for you. Thank you very much, Eve.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you Suzanne.
Thank you.
Okay. At this, as this is a public hearing, are there any members of the public who wish to comment? Please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're attending by phone and then star six to unmute yourself. Is there anyone here present wishing to comment? Do we have anyone online or on the phone? Okay. So that would be the close to the public hearing, public comment. And now we will go to, this is a preliminary hearing, but let's just still go in order and. Any commissioner comments and then. If we could do commissioner comments and then combine it with the answer to Sarah's questions, which are, hold on. There we go. Do we support the point analysis? Do we have any additional comments? And then do we feel this is ready for a final hearing? Okay, so we'll keep the same order, Elaine.
I am supportive of the point analysis. I don't have any additional comments other than the ones I've already made. And I believe it's ready for a final hearing.
Great, thank you. Ethan?
Hi, yes. I think the design, the final design here is, is, is very attractive and. And therefore I am supportive of the point analysis and. I believe it's ready for a final hearing. I have no further comments. Thank you.
For example, Elaine says my previous comments and we're doing sort of summary minutes now. Does that mean that a previous comments are? Or is it a good practice to summarize your previous comments?
If, if you don't mind then.
It's probably worth, if you have an important, like I comment, you want to make sure you have a point of, it's probably worth doing so.
Okay, then I'm going to comment.
Okay.
I'd like to comment on the upper windows, if they could be taller. And the kick plate detail being not steel, which you mentioned, they're open to considering changing. And then also the tons of glazing on the first level that could be reduced.
Thank you. Okay. Ethan, was there anything you would like to, for the record, any comments? I don't think you had any previous comments either, but.
No, I'm, I'm good with the design.
Okay.
No comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen?
Thank you. I'm generally really pleased with the response to the comments that were made the last time around. I thought it was very clever to. Kind of mimic the town seal into the roof line and I think it's a great improvement. As far as the, the top of the building is concerned. I appreciate the simplicity in the upper windows. I understand their placement and, and how they don't quite match up with the buildings on either side. That may change depending on. The structural engineer's opinion about things. But I, I don't really have a problem with them. I agreed with Mr. Giller and Ms. Gort. About the ground floor windows. And my thought about the ground floor windows in addition to the fact that it's a lot of glazing is I think the aluminum. Mullions just look a little cheap. I think they, they, they don't look as, as. Important as the building really is and a little wider, maybe a different material if they're wood. Would change the appearance, but they just look a little like a strip mall window of some kind. I think that you came up with a really excellent solution to the elevator and the rooftop deck. And even though I'm not a fan of the rooftop decks, this is a much better design than the first one that came through the commission. So all in all, I think you've done a good job addressing our concerns. I think the point analysis is, is correct. Those are my comments and. I think we're ready for a final hearing.
Thank you. Mark?
Yes.
That's it?
I think that we've thrown, the, the panel has thrown a lot of architectural constrictions out. From our first review and I think that the architects have done a great job of addressing. Each of those objections and making this a project that could move forward. The upper deck is a lot more contained as Steve was alluding to than the previous. Design and as a result of that, we have the floor level. Lowered and the windows lowered and we've got to understand that there's a. Concessions made for each step forward and what we've got is. Accumulation of many concessions that the architects have made. I think it's. It, it's important that this panel understand that, that our function here is to look for compliance with the. Design standards and we walk a very fine line when we do that. And sometimes our personal feelings get involved and we start to try to redesign the projects. And we need to be very careful about that. I think that we have to be careful what we ask for. And in my opinion, as I look at this building, I think that we've gotten what we asked for. But I think that what we've gotten is a less. Architectural building than what would have been there before. As I look at this building, it's very plain. And I feel that the previous design had a lot of nice elements that are gone now. So again, we get what we asked for. I believe that the point analysis is, is accurate. And obviously the staff worked closely with the architects to achieve that. I've given my additional comments and I think that it's ready for a final hearing.
Mark?
Thank you, Chair. Question one, I'm not supportive, I'm not supportive of the point analysis due to policy five architectural compatibility. Two.
Can you be more specific? Sorry.
I'm getting to that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure. Two, the upper deck, cornice design is, and the upper deck and the cornice design is sound and complies. Though there's too much first floor glazing. I do think it could be ready for final with reduction in glazing in the first floor windows, strengthening the mullion size and raising the top of the kick plate. Thank you.
Just, I'm trying to pull up five R, but I believe it's not applicable for projects in the historic district. I believe it says that all things should be reviewed under the handbook of design standards, but I gotta pull up that.
So that seemed to be to me the closest place to, since it wasn't addressed in. Point analysis, that seemed to be the most relevant, but if there's a better one.
Let, let me get that. I just wanted to get that before someone else was trying to latch on to that.
That speaks to architectural compatibility. Aesthetics, conservation district, et cetera. So, but if there's a better fit, Chris, I'm flexible.
Yeah, it's only applicable outside the historic district. So we'd need to find another.
You'd have to find something within the handbook of design standards that fails. Or, or is awarded points.
Meet the handbook of design, section four point three illustration. I mean, that's in the.
You could, you could point to anything in there and, and say that it, it doesn't, it doesn't apply.
Alright, thank you, Chris. I amend my comment that I'm not supportive of point analysis because I don't believe it. Applies the intent for ground floor glazing on the twenty nineteen handbook. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Susan?
Thank you. I appreciate the adjustments that the architects have made. In response to our last hearing. I am supportive of the points analysis. I don't have any additional comments apart from my question about the energy conservation. And I believe that the project is ready for a final hearing.
Thank you. So when I was glad to see that the applicant can make the billing height and the elevator work, I thought it was very clever. Changes and designs to, to that. There's, I wanted to point out that there is in two eleven, there is as part of the historic design standards. It says the amount of facade devoted to wall surfaces compared to that devoted to openings should be compatible. Within the neighborhood and with the function of the building. So this is where our job comes in is that we have to interpret what is a very, a gray area. It does appear because of the changes, I do think that appears the proportions of solid deglazing is very high, higher on the upper level. But I think perhaps it'll look better as I think Mark was alluding to, if we could see the lines of the horizontal siding. I think that might address some of our concerns there. So if you can show that in the next hearing, I think that would be helpful. And also, yes, the floor and window lines do not line up with the neighboring buildings. The first floor windows do have shorter kick plates, but I, I would ask that we look at page referred to. And you included this as a header, if you'll go to page twenty-two and it's on some of the drawings. If you look, we're looking at three buildings and we're not looking at the whole block. So if you look at the three buildings, this building looks different, but if you look at the whole block, there's really no consistency in these. Designs and I think we actually may or may not, something to think about, do we want three buildings that really match? Do we want to have matchy-matchy in this whole block or do we want to have some variation? So I feel that when I first looked at it, I thought that the lining up the floor plates and lining up the windows was important. But then when I look at the whole block, I think, I don't know if we really want that and I think it's, I'm okay with the windows not lining up and the floor plates. Not lining up and I would defer to the, the architects and the design folks. To say, you know, a higher kick plate may look awkward. Maybe we can look at both at the next hearing or see what it would have looked like with the higher kick plate. But I do think we have to look at the whole picture, the whole block. There's probably, I actually, when you look there, I think there's probably a lot of buildings that wouldn't pass. Wouldn't be approved today.
Yeah, I'll, I'll note that there are several that obviously wouldn't. Probably about a third of them obviously wouldn't meet any of our standards, but there are some, you know. The, the two newer ones where the cursor's over, both of those were approved under the handbook of design standards. Under the same standards for storefront and you can see like, you know, in terms of the. You know, upper lever windows and stuff are a, a lot larger departure than what is presented today. Both of those were approved in the early two thousands under. You know, the, the core commercial design standards of, of chapter six.
So, yeah, so in summary on that point, I think we have to look at this in terms of the whole block and not just this section of three buildings. Cause it may perhaps withstand these differentiators from the neighboring buildings, make it really stand out, but when you look at the whole block. I don't think these differences make that much of, are really that significant. I do think that the lower window framing should be beefed up though. So in terms of the questions, I support the point analysis. I've just given you very lengthy additional comments. And I think this is ready for a final hearing. Think that's it for this item on the agenda. Thank you very much, Eve. Thank you Suzanne, if you're still on.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Commissioners.
So next on the agenda, we have a, we have no work sessions. Thank you. And town council update, summary or updates. I guess there's been a couple of town council meetings since.
I, no.
Oh, no?
Council, like you, they canceled a meeting.
Okay.
So they canceled their last June meeting, so they just met on last week, July eleventh. So. Yeah, so. We brought to them the rent program, outdoor energy use, renewable energy mitigation program. Along with those changes to thirty-three R and thirty-three A, the new addition of that. And that was all approved by the council on second reading, so that will be going into effect here shortly. Let's see, we also brought an ordinance that would prohibit the use of cedar, cedar shake roofs in the future. We had some concerns in one neighborhood where the HOA rules required that you had to have that. As your roof product and. The, you know, people that were facing that situation were dealing with insurance company. You know, issues where like, I can't barely get this thing insured or it's going to cost a fortune, get it insured. We've allowed it for years and we've allowed, we treat it as a class A roof, which is, you know, fire resistant. But there's a membrane that's underneath it that's, that helps retard fire. And then the shingles themselves have to be treated every several years. Problem is, is, you know, trying to monitor that's next to impossible. The county actually, they have the same as us. They've allowed those shingles. And at one point they had monitoring, but that went by the wayside years ago. So anyway.
And Mark, does that apply to new construction? Does it apply to re-roofing?
Any re-roofs also.
Any re-roof and is a permit required to put on new shingles regardless of whether they're asphalt or whatever?
Yeah, we do require. Now the county doesn't. Yes, the county doesn't require a permit for roof, re-roofing, but we do. So yes. Then. Yeah, parking code. The issue we ran into was stables with the uneven number of parking spaces related with triplexes. Sarah brought this to you a while ago. So anyway, that went through with the council. They agree to make that change. And we're also just set, we have outdoor display merchandise rules. And where you can only have one piece. And where you can only have one piece of merchandise in front of your business displayed outside, with the exception of a couple of weekends a year, when we allow basically the businesses to just put whatever they want outside, as long as it's not impeding pedestrian flow, things like that. And so we, we are setting the dates for those of Memorial Day and Labor Day weekends. Then, Rick Fout, our building official, gave a little update on the zero energy ready home program. That program adopted a couple of years ago and based on some input from the contractors, we amended that program to provide a couple of additional options for reaching compliance to an above code level. And what we found since we've implemented that a year and a half or so ago is about fifty percent of the homes are just going through the zero energy ready home, which is a department energy program. The other half are electing to opt in to all the requirements of the twenty twenty-one international energy code. Right now we're on the twenty eighteen code, so those standards are less, the, you know, energy rating you have to achieve is less. And we adopt those codes every two cycles. So we won't adopt the twenty-one code. We'll adopt the twenty-four code, probably like beginning of twenty-five. So we skip a cycle. And anyway, the, but as an option, they can voluntarily go with the twenty twenty-one. So we've seen about half and half, but we have less issues now than we did in the past in terms of people are reaching compliance. So that's working pretty well. And then finally, the, the main thing I wanted to talk about was we did have a great discussion with, about the Breck Grand vacations proposal. So thanks, Sarah. Just pulling it up right now and I wanted to kind of just go through it briefly with you. I know Julia may have briefly discussed this with you at your meeting back in June. There are six areas that are affected by this proposal. Number one there is the North Gondola Lot. Number two is the North Gold Rush Lot. And number three is the South Gold Rush. So those are all the areas that you guys saw the master plan come through a couple of years ago. And then you've seen this development permit that was making its way through. That, as you know, now has been put on hold while they have these further discussions. The three other pieces of this puzzle, if you will, are policy number, excuse me. Number four up there, that is the current administration build insight up next to one ski hill place. And that's where a number of years ago, the planning commission and council approved East Peak Gate Hotel. So that's in play here, as well as number five, which is directly adjacent to it. And it's at the end of four o'clock Run Road, which is in the county. And then finally, number six. So I'll talk a little bit about how those all play together. So the proposal essentially is for Mike Dudik, who has an option to, with all these properties, is to basically abandon the proposal to do development on the Gondola Lot. Number one. Instead, he'd like to move most of that density up to number four for the East Peak Gate Hotel, some type of resurrection of that. Maybe a little bit smaller. And then he'd like to move the rest of that density primarily to number five for two chalet homes, he's calling them. And then number six, which would be a new subdivision directly adjacent to and slightly above Timber Trail subdivision. So and he's thinking in the order of fifteen to twenty lots in, in, in this new subdivision. If he's able to basically take that density that's down on number one and move it up to four and six, he's willing to abandon those opportunities in number one. He would still like to retain the ability to do duplexes, I believe it's sixteen units. So eight buildings on number three, the South Gold Rush Lot. And number two, that's the North Gold Rush, would have parking within podium above it and put workforce housing. And the housing, he would, he feels he needs, gonna need to build about forty-five units to meet our code requirements for housing associated with the East Peak Gate Hotel. Or the new incarnation of that. And then he's offered up to build additional housing for the town and for Vale, to the extent that the town is interested. So the, the council.
Site number one?
On site number two. On, on North Gold Rush. So anyway, so he presented this to the council a month ago. And then at the first June meeting, and then the council had an opportunity to make their comments at the July eleventh meeting last week. And I think there's general support for further exploring this and that maybe moving that density could be a good thing. Some council members feel stronger than others about seeing nothing happening on, one, the North Gondola Lot. Some of the issues that came up at the meeting centered on ski hill road traffic and how, how much more would this exacerbate an already bad traffic situation up there on ski hill road? And what can be done to mitigate that? There was a fair amount of discussion about housing and is number two, the North Gold Rush the right place for it? Or should that really happen instead on the North Gondola Lot? And because it's closer to town, you wouldn't have to have, have all the people there crossing Park Avenue, that type of thing. And just from a, you know, urban form perspective and, you know, putting everything within better walking distance of the downtown. There's a number of reasons if there might be a good idea to look at employee housing on number one instead of number two. So the council is really interested in that. Dudik's gonna, and his team are going to be working on some visual renderings of what housing would look like if it was put on a podium on top of parking on number one. Same on number two, North Gold Rush. There's a bigger area to put parking on one. Cause the existing parking area is twice as big as the one on North Gold Rush. Generally, we're supportive of the subdivision concept up there. We do recognize there's going to be a fair amount of resistance from the Timber Trail homeowners up there.
When you say we, are you talking about the planning staff?
Staff, yeah. We've already heard it. They've already been showing up and writing letters and stuff like that. And, you know, getting attorneys involved in that kind of stuff. So we're going to anticipate that that's going to be an interesting dialogue. And that's really going to require an amendment to the master plan. That's all within the peak seven and eight master plan area. But right now there's no density on number six. So it basically has to go through rezoning, which in this case would be a master plan that says this is appropriate for this much density. So it's something that would eventually come to the planning commission. You guys would weigh in on in terms of amendment to that whole area.
Is, is that white area immediately east of six, is that the snowcat lot?
Yes, that's the, yep, that's their maintenance yard.
So those homes are going to be hearing the snow cats roaring out every night?
Be right up against.
Timber Trail hears them right now.
The common issue with really anything soap side is a lot of those areas, just homes are the last thing that they get groomed.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, if you've ever stayed in one. It's a lot noisier than you would think. You would think you'd have tranquility and it's not necessarily the case.
Yep. Yeah, um, the one thing has changed since the previous East Peak Gate Hotel approval is, or probably the biggest thing is when the council changed the rules regarding mass and basically got rid of the mass bonus. Now there's going to be a lot more density required to achieve the same size of a hotel building or, or hotel condo as was proposed before. They're going to need a lot more density. And so that's what's eaten up all the density that was sitting on North Gondola, if they go through with this. But then you'd just have enough left over to account for the subdivision and then his portion of the workforce housing on number two.
That also suggests a smaller parking garage.
Yes.
Yeah, compared to the, the previous East Peak Hotel, I think it's to have one less parking level. Cause before they really over, overdesigned it for both the number of units as well as they were planning for that large amenity club.
What I heard Dudik say at the meeting up there was that there would be a one level parking garage with housing on top of it.
Yeah, and that's the, that's the lower, the employee housing one down in town. I think Mike was referring to the, the parking levels for the,
East Peak.
East Peak, which would be site number four.
He was talking about site number two when he answered that question, Chris. Said that that, that parking garage would be different than what they had proposed before. It would basically be a one level garage with housing on top of it.
Correct. Yeah.
To develop the concept yet. That's what he said.
Yeah, we're, yeah. But that, that was an issue, a concern was the amount of cars that were parked in that building in number four for ski hill road.
Yeah.
Traffic where that is to be as a result of the reduction.
That's one of the reasons we did that max on parking spaces because of that excess parking that was up at four. So yes, good point, Mike.
Spoke to number four by answering that most of that parking would be because of the grade of that hill, that basically the front level is going to be up at the top. And the lower portion is going to be primarily parking behind whatever kind of lobby. But you're coming at the lobbies and you gotta go up to get to what the hotel is.
Uh, some of the other issues that came up had to do with cucumber gulch and making sure that whatever happens up there at four is not going to impact the gulch. And that there's continued commitment by the developer to make contributions towards water quality issues there. You know, a lot of the issues we've had in the past are, it's what happens up on the ski area. And the sediment collection areas that they have up there and keeping those clean. And then the sixty inch pipe that goes under ski hill road there into the gulch. That's, I'm, I know I'm missing things, but that's kind of an overview of the discussion.
Discussion on, on the, the site number one there about what that particular mix would be. Would that be a, a mixed use kind of thing where we have residential and we have a little bit of commercial? We have basically a concept that is similar to what they were proposing before, but for affordable housing?
Probably not any commercial. It'd just be parking and residential. And then possibly, which would be nice, is some enhancements to the Riverwalk area, maybe adding a little park, you know, doing some things to assist with that whole riverfront section as well.
You bet they couldn't like layer, put a middle layer between the garage and the apartments for a nice big supermarket.
The same thing.
Cause the gondola is going now.
Yeah, yep. Yeah. So a lot of moving parts. Planning on August twenty-second being the next time this comes in front of council. And there would be some visual renderings at that.
August twenty-second?
Yeah. And so there'd be some visuals at that point to kind of look at what housing could look like in a, on a podium on number two and on number one. And maybe some different versions of that with different densities as well. So the council can maybe get their hands around, arms around what they might like to see. There's quite a bit of potential for additional density if you were to stack it on top of parking. So anyway, yeah, that's a overview and we'll continue to kind of keep you guys up to date. And obviously eventually if this goes through, you'll get an opportunity to, to talk about it much more.
Have they put the brakes on the employee housing project on Huron and nine? Yeah, and Trotter.
Yeah, he put the brakes on that a few months ago when he started to shift towards this idea. And, yeah.
Not to beat a dead horse with this, but I know there's an agreement between the town and Vale about the number of parking spots that are there. How many parking spots have to be accounted for between sites one, two, and three?
There's fifteen sixty that have to be accounted for between one, two, three. Well, two and three are considered one in that parking agreement. And then the South Gondola Lot is, which is, you know, below one. There's fifteen sixty between the three.
And nine hundred on the south lot?
The, 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 the south lot has almost a thousand right now. But the, the additional spaces that were created with the parking structure do not count towards that number. So they have to maintain, I think it's, it's either fifteen twenty or fifteen sixty, something like that.
Yeah, it's, it's actually trending the number. It's actually closer to two thousand now because with their updated lease agreement, with the parking structure, it basically amends that to say that those additional spaces were created for the parking structure was like four sixty-two or somewhere in that neighborhood, don't count towards that fifteen hundred number. So really with the development, they're looking at the South Gondola and the Gold Rush in terms of what they have to make up if they, if they touch those lots.
So there's a thousand ten spaces that they have to account for between the North Gold Rush and the North Gondola.
You just.
Per the agreement.
You just alluded to a lease agreement. Who owns that property?
The, well, the lease agreement for the South Gondola Lot, it's, it's owned by Vale, but the town has what, like a hundred year lease? On the, the parking structure and then Vale manages it in the winter and he managed it in the summer. Is that how that works?
Do I understand you to say that Vale owns the property, Wreckin Ridge owns the improvements? And has made that improvement investment based on a long-term lease?
Correct, yeah. On the south, on the South Gondola Lot, under, for the parking structure that's constructed currently.
So essentially, Wreckin Ridge controls that lease and the revenue and everything else. Vale only owns the property.
Yeah, I guess I don't know the specifics of the.
Ski area actually controls the revenue during the winter. There's some agreement on some sharing of that revenue. And then I think the, the town in the summertime controls the revenue.
And they control the revenue through a vendor? Is that how it works?
Yeah, there's someone, it's, it's Breck Park, I think, that's collecting all the revenue for that. So, yep.
What's the position on the roundabout? Is the town going to hold firm at that?
So far the council has been like, we need a roundabout there at French. Dudik has indicated, well, engineers say that a traffic light could work. And, you know, I'm sure it's a, it's a cheaper solution. But so far council is unconvinced that they'd go with anything else, but they said they would, you know, listen to more information about that. Eric also wants to put to bed the idea that you can get a roundabout at Ski Hill and Park. So ideally at one time there's a plan that just ran roundabouts through every intersection in town. And at Ski Hill and Park, one of the big problems is because of the buildings that are right here already, there's not the area. And there's some great issues with trying to actually achieve a roundabout at that. And there's some great issues with trying to actually achieve a roundabout at that, at that area. But Eric wants to make sure that as part of this, it's firmly discussed and said, yes, it's impossible to do. Because otherwise they'd still like to talk about that as a solution as well.
So that just makes the traffic situation that much worse not to have a roundabout and to try to work all that additional traffic through that intersection.
Yeah, potentially, right?
Yeah, the, the roundabout at French Street is from, you know, talking to the engineers and public works, they prefer the roundabout even though, you know, it's debatable which would perform better between the roundabout and the, and the stoplight. But the big advantage of roundabouts is really the ninety-five percent of the time where we're not at peak traffic, where you can just keep people moving in all directions. And that's, you know, we're, we're really the perfect community for roundabouts in that sense. Cause there's, you know, we all think of the, the peak times where like we're stuck in it. But really the, the more likely scenario is the off-peak times where you're just sitting at a stoplight and there's no other cars around, which happens quite often.
Here on tonight.
Yeah.
Has the longest light.
Exactly.
And the string of traffic goes all the way up almost to Peak Eight.
Yeah.
From that light.
No, we've got a light out there at Coin Valley and same thing. You know, I mean, it stops every minute to stop Highway nine traffic to let one or two cars onto the highway. Yeah, so that's, that's a high level overview, guys, and we'll just keep you, keep you updated as it goes.
All right. Thank you, Mark.
Any other issues or questions? Okay. So that, this town of Breckenridge Planning Commission meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Parking spaces are in that lot right now.